Okay. Is Justin here?
Yeah.
She is, okay. He was pulling in when I pulled in, so he should be here in just a minute.
How are you?
All right. Let's call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us for our October 20th County Commissioner briefing. Let's look over the agenda. We're going to have an update on COVID-19. And Stacy Saunders and Fletch Tobew will help us out with that. After that, Rachel Nygaard is going to give an update on coronavirus relief funding. After that, the other items on the agenda are the Dogwood Trust grant jail and prison reentry project, discussion of donation policy, elections update. And Commissioners, there's one other item that staff would like to add to our briefing agenda, which is, Ms. Pender, could you just describe what this item is?
Yes, sir. And it's also at your place. It's a right-of-way for the Jacob Holmes Way over in the Anka Park.
All right. So we'll talk about a right-of-way issue. And I think the staff are hoping that if, once we've had the briefing, if everyone's comfortable with it, we might add this by consensus to the agenda tonight. All right, Commissioners, are there any other items that people would like to add for our briefing discussion today? All right, then let's get started with the COVID-19 update. And Stacy Saunders and Fletch Tobew, I think, are here to, and others, got a whole team here, helps out.
Slight change of plans here. So, good afternoon, Commissioners and community members. My name is Stacy Wood, and I serve as a Public Information Officer in Buncombe County's Emergency Operations Center. And I'm here to introduce our presenters today, but also wanted to remind the community of a couple of updates and kind of housekeeping items. So while the daytime format is now a little different for these COVID-19 community updates, what is offered during the community updates remains very important for our community to know about. And so we just want to remind the community that we are still providing these community updates. They are here at the Board of Commissioner pre-meetings at 3:00 PM every other Tuesday. And so today, we have added American Sign Language interpretation. And so viewers at home or on your computer or phone will see an American Sign Language interpreter up at the right-hand side, top right side of their screen. And so we also, we're running into a couple of tech issues today with the simultaneous Spanish interpretation, but that will also be provided ongoing. And that version, the Spanish-language version, will be available right after today's COVID-19 update. So I just wanted to, those are the housekeeping items. And these will be available for the COVID-19 community updates ongoing. So today's presenters are Stacy Saunders, Buncombe County Public Health Director, and Dr. William Hathaway, Chief Medical Officer for Mission Health in the North Carolina Division of HCA. And we will go ahead and get started with an update from Stacy Saunders.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to present today to you. Please note that today I will be using data from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services dashboard due to a delay in updating our local dashboard. But this presents a really great opportunity for me to also inform you that we are recommending movement to the North Carolina DHHS dashboard and sunsetting our local dashboard beginning next week. Locally, we supported a county-specific dashboard when North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services did not have a dashboard. Since that time, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has supported a robust and accurate dashboard that includes county-level filters that also include the same information that our local dashboard has on it. And this move really is to eliminate that duplication of effort. As I said, the two dashboards essentially have the same data on them. And so this will allow our team to now put those duplicative efforts toward other efforts here locally, including the support of our case management, or our case investigation, contact tracing, testing, access, and other future COVID response plans that we have. And so first up, for us here in Buncombe County, as of this afternoon, there are a total of 3,800 confirmed cases. The majority of these cases, about 41% of them, have been, have occurred in 25- to 49-year-olds. And you will see here by using the North Carolina DHHS dashboard, there's additional information that they have that our local dashboard doesn't, which is not only the PCR molecular confirmed cases, but also the antigen. We've also experienced 98 COVID-related deaths. The majority, as you've heard me say before, the majority of those local deaths are occurring in age groups that are over 65 years and associated with long-term care facilities. I'm going to zoom in a little so that you can see, we saw a large increase beginning in early July and throughout the summer with a leveling throughout September. And then at the beginning of the end of September, we actually started to see a steady increase where we are currently seeing about 30 to 33 new cases per day. And I just wanted to note that as our communicable disease teams are doing the case investigation, they're not finding any one particular location or facility site that folks are visiting more than others. But what they are finding is that people are out and about, sometimes with symptoms. And sometimes, you know, they're putting people at risk due to their symptoms. But also, folks are not adhering to the precautions like keeping six feet apart. So when we do our case investigation, that's what we are commonly finding. And so, you know, I'd, again, take the opportunity to let everybody know that it is very important for our community members to remember that if they have symptoms that are associated with COVID, we want them to stay home, not to interact, to contact their providers for assessment and testing if necessary. And then speaking of testing, we also want to remind everyone that testing is available at several different community sites, including community partners like our FQHCs, our urgent cares, our pharmacies, and also at our own community testing sites. And we are currently scheduling our fixed sites and our pop-up sites into November. And folks can visit buncomeredy.org. And if you scroll, if you choose the testing function, you'll see a calendar or a list of testing options at the bottom into, from this month and then beyond. And I just want to, as I said, since our case investigations are showing that folks are moving about with symptoms, I want to say, symptoms or no symptoms, it is very extremely important for individuals to remember to wear their face covering, to keep six feet apart, and to wash their hands to lower their risk. If you are having symptoms of, that are associated with COVID, we want you to stay home and contact your provider. So just to reiterate that when we don't adhere to the guidance of the three Ws, we are actually helping the virus spread, and that is not what we want. We want folks to adhere to the three Ws so that we reduce the risk of infecting our neighbors, our friends, our families, and others in our community. So speaking of the COVID testing efforts, the ones in our community have resulted in about 86,000 tests administered throughout the community. And as I've said before, those testing efforts help us not only identify cases and quickly get them isolated so that we reduce the spread of virus. That testing also helps us understand community transmission because it allows us to then understand the percent positivity, so the number of those tests that are coming back positive. The last time I spoke to you all, the percent positivity was about 3.3%. As of today, it is 3.5%. The state's current percent positivity has increased from 6.4% from the last time I spoke to you all to about 7.4% today. And again, while our percent positivity is less than the desired 5%, which is good, it has increased since September. And in order to reduce the spread of virus, I can't say it enough, it is very important for all of us to use the precautions that we have in place, which is to limit our interactions, wear face covering, wash our hands, and keep six feet apart. Those are our best defenses right now. Now is not the time to let our guard down. And lastly, I'm going to share just the COVID-like illness report. This graph shows the percent of emergency department visits in North Carolina for COVID-like illness through the week ending October 15th. Just a reminder that we are that bright yellow line. But one of the things to note here is that across the state and each of the regions, we are seeing an uptick in that COVID-like illness. And so this is a good time to turn it over, and to turn it over to our guest, Dr. Bill Hathaway, Senior Vice President and Chief Medical Officer for Mission Hospital, to talk more about hospital and health system.
Thank you, Stacy. It's a pleasure to be here again. It's been a while since I've seen many of you, or at least in this venue. And I appreciate the opportunity to come back and address you and the community. We, let's see, if I can handle the challenges here. As Stacy appropriately pointed out, we have been seeing an increase, and I think we're all aware, of COVID cases across the United States, and COVID deaths continue to occur. The shapes of these curves that you'll see that Stacy presented and I presented are very, very similar, meaning that what is happening nationally is happening locally. And we all need to be very aware of that. We've tragically passed 8 million cases and over 200,000 deaths in the United States. And most of us are well aware that that's very disproportionate to our population. At Mission, I wanted to provide an update of what we've seen. And you'll note that on this chart, this graph, the blue curve represents the total numbers of patients we've had hospitalized since March up until this morning. And the gray and orange curves represent those in the intensive care units and those on a ventilator in the gray. What you see is concerning to me is we are approaching, if not surpassing, our peak of patients that we had hospitalized in July when we hit our first peak. And now have gone up again very steadily to the current values of about 35 to 45 patients in the health system at any given time. Most recently, we've had 31 patients hospitalized this morning, eight of whom were in the ICU. What I find most interesting, however, and perhaps slightly encouraging, despite the recent rise in the cases, is that while cases have risen, the numbers of patients that we've seen in the ICU is remaining flat, and that's encouraging to me. I don't have an explanation for that. Lots of proposed explanations. Lots of proposed explanations, but encouraging to me means that we have adequate resources. We have adequate beds, ventilators, testing supplies, and PPE to handle the surge right now. And we are certainly much better off than we were back in March when we first encountered this illness and had very much limited supplies. So I want to echo in closing my comments here, what Stacy said, is that our best defense at this point in time are the three Ws: wearing a mask, waiting six feet apart, and washing our hands and keeping them away from our mouths and face. We anticipate and hope for a vaccine. The vaccine will come, we just don't know when it will come. Both the Health Department and Mission Health System are in the process of coordinating with the state to obtain supplies for those vaccines. But the best strategy we have now and even into next year is to be mindful of social distancing. I think we can do that safely and effectively and still move towards protecting each other and getting back to where we need to be in a more normal state for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, both of you. I wondered if you could share with us sort of any of your thinking about if there are threshold levels at which it might be most responsible to consider re-implementing some of the policies that we had between the sort of March and August timeframe. I think obviously no one wants to do that, but as we see these numbers and know that we're approaching sort of the confluence of flu season and COVID and ongoing way, I'm just interested in sort of the latest thinking on what we need to, when we go into sort of that yellow zone, when we're in that red zone, and any thoughts on that?
Yeah, thanks so much for the question. And so one thing I'll first say is that not only do, not only am I looking at these every day, but every week, we are looking at these through our still, still our command center and monitoring these trends over time to see if there's any, you know, other decisions that we need to be making. As to, you know, true demarcations of thresholds, I would say the things that we look at the most would be, what are the new cases per day coming in? How steep is that curve going? And percent positivity, because that is one of our best indicators of community transmission. And so one of the other things that we look at too, as I said, is that anecdotal type of data that we get from case investigation, which is, are we seeing something within our community that needs us to take action? And right now, what I can tell you through those case investigations is it's that individual behavior of, we have to remember that six feet is really important. We have to remember that masks are really important. There's growing evidence about how important masks are right now. And then, of course, we would be looking toward our hospital partners too, and just as Dr. Hathaway stated, you know, looking at what the hospitalization rates are, what are the ICU, are we reaching capacity? And right now, as you heard Dr. Hathaway say, that there's still capacity within our hospital at this point. But it is monitored daily for some of us. And then most certainly every week, we are discussing that in our command center.
I have a couple of questions. One is, looking ahead to the fall and winter, you know, there's long, there's long been concern that cases would increase in the fall and winter as people have less opportunities to do things outdoors, and there's just more happening indoors. People are, you know, indoors in close proximity, and that's obviously a lot more favorable environment for transmission than when people are outside. So is there, you know, based on everything that we've learned so far and the trends we have right now, is there any way to kind of, you know, do forecast for our community around what we think the fall and winter might look like? I realize, you know, this is such an unprecedented situation. It's all kind of asking you to talk about looking into a crystal ball, but nevertheless, I guess I'd like to hear your thoughts about what the best thinking is on that based on the learned experience we've had so far.
It's a really good question, Commissioner Newman, and I appreciate you bringing it up. Obviously, we're concerned about the confluence of the influenza season and the ongoing COVID season, as it were. Some have referred to it as a possible twin-demic. There's been a lot of thought about that, and we are at least mildly benefited by the experience of what's happened in the southern hemisphere. Specifically, the flu season comes to the southern hemisphere before it comes to the northern hemisphere. And so we get an idea of what the flu season's going to be like each and every year, based on what we've seen in Australia and New Zealand and South America and other places. Interestingly, and we don't know how to explain it, it appears that it's not as vigorous a flu season as it has been previously. And some have argued that this is because these two respiratory viruses are competing for the same host, as it were, the same person to infect, and that one tends to dominate and predominate and win out biologically. I don't, I'm not sure I completely buy that. It's interesting. It may be that there's some reporting issues related to the pandemic. It may be related to the fact that we're all masking anyway, so flu season is down. It's hard to know. But I think, I'm hopeful, I do know it's going to get worse, okay? Because as you pointed out, as we move inside and as we have the behaviors, we see, we see it every year, that respiratory illnesses rise in the winter and fade away in the summer. That will happen here too. But I'm hopeful that based on the southern hemisphere experience, that we'll be okay. It hearkens us all to remember that the flu vaccine is recommend, we have a vaccine for the flu. It won't protect against COVID, but it's critically important that each and every one of us above six months of age get the flu vaccine. There's, it's completely safe. There are very, very few, if any, medical contraindications to getting it, and we encourage you to get that flu vaccine. Nobody wants either COVID and flu together, or COVID followed by influenza. That would be a disaster. So that's one thing that we can do in addition to following our three Ws.
Okay. The other questions that I wanted to ask have to do with holidays. So Halloween is coming up, and I'm just, would appreciate hearing any thoughts from you about, you know, the, you know, this holiday, and a lot of people have a lot of fun, and it brings a lot of joy to a lot of kids, you know, in our community. But I hear a lot of people asking about, you know, what, you know, what should it look like? So I just, should it, should people do it at all? If they do, how, how should, how should they do it? So I'm sure a lot of people would be interested in hearing your thoughts about this.
Yeah, and I think I want to recognize that it is tough. It's been, it's been tough on folks, right? And so I would draw folks to, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services has a really nice Halloween guidance document that talks about the level of risk. So it's important for folks to know that activities have risks to them right now, and so that there are choices that we can make that are less risky. And so, you know, our traditional Halloween with trick-or-treating at door-to-door and sticking your hand into a bucket is not ideal and is not recommended, right? But there are other less risky activities or activities that have less risk than traditional Halloween. And so we would encourage folks to look at that guidance and to think through, what other Halloween activities can you partake in that still, you know, allows you to enjoy the spirit of what Halloween is without putting yourself at great risk for contracting the virus?
All right. And then I guess my related question is, thinking a little bit further down the line, you know, we have Thanksgiving and we have Christmas coming up, when, you know, families travel and get together and spend time together, and it's a really important time for people. But just thinking about, you know, what I just described, it also sounds like, you know, especially for a lot of folks who might be more vulnerable to being, becoming seriously ill if they contract COVID. Any thoughts you would share about folks, because a lot of people are planning now for what they're going to do in November and December. So I'd welcome any thoughts around that as well.
Yeah, so, and this is not unique necessarily to Thanksgiving and Christmas, because we've seen this happen throughout the summer too, when, when families were trying to get together for cookouts or for vacations. And so, you know, there is a higher risk for as we bring activities indoors. And so things that we would want people to consider is, if you have folks in your family who are in these high-risk groups, it's important to protect them. So your, your holiday might have to look a little different if you really want to protect our over 65 population, or if you have someone, regardless of their age, in your family with a chronic condition or a underlying health condition, that your Thanksgiving and your Christmas might look, look a little different this year. That, again, we recognize that this is hard on, on people in that we want them to make choices that are responsible and that are putting themselves at the lowest amount of risk. And so to remember that when, when you're coming together in any type of gathering, you are, again, inherently putting yourself at risk because it's an interaction and an exposure. So to remember the three Ws as much as possible, and that means, you know, when we're meeting with our families, that means that, you know, when we're in those spaces, keeping our distance, washing our hands as much. If, you know, the, the three Ws are additive, so when we use them together, that's our best defense. If one of them is not possible, that means we have to really double up on the other two. So for folks to remember that too. And just to remember that those of us who have family members who are in those high-risk groups, to, now is the time to be thinking of alternatives and how we want to celebrate in a safe way that keeps them at the lowest risk, if at no risk.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, other questions? All right, thank you both very much for being here.
Thank you all so much.
We really appreciate you. All right, next up is an update on coronavirus relief funding.
Good afternoon, commissioners and others who are listening. My name's Rachel Nygaard, and I'm here with you today to share an update about coronavirus relief funds, or CRF. These are funds that were awarded to Buncombe County as part of the Federal Cares Act. We're here sharing an update because we've got about three months left, less than three months now, on the funds as currently structured, and wanting to just have an opportunity for commissioners to hear the update about how the funds have been used and some priorities for the last couple of months. So as a reminder, CRF, or the coronavirus relief funds, are funds for local governments that came through the Cares Act to address COVID-19 pandemic. These funds were awarded through the state of North Carolina and administered by the newly-created this year Office of Pandemic Recovery and subject, because they are these federal funds, to the U.S. Treasury guidance. The dollar amount that we were awarded is just shy of $10 million total. It's listed on the screen there for you, $9,568,844. There was a Phase 1 or a Round 1, and then later a Round 2. Both of those came before the Board of Commissioners, and we have appropriated those funds. A reminder on the framing for what these funds can be used for. These are defined in the legislation, all related to COVID-19, within the categories listed here, which include medical, public health, payroll, compliance with public health measures, economic support, and finally, allocations to subrecipients. On that note, oops. The Board of Commissioners approved a methodology for distributing these funds to subrecipients, including our six municipalities within Buncombe County and the 19 fire districts, which are nonprofit organizations within Buncombe County, based on the sales tax distribution methodology. Went and worked with each subrecipient who opted in and submitted plans for the use of the funds, and you'll see the way these percentages break out on your screen. Buncombe County retained about 69% of those funds for expenditures, both operational and personnel, directly by the county, with 25% of the total funds going to the municipalities and 6% to the fire districts. So spending to date, this number on the top of the screen reflects March through September. So it does straddle two fiscal years. We've spent $3,659,403, and that's split between the salaries and the operating, like I mentioned. Salaries, we have personnel that are substantially dedicated in our public health and public safety roles, and we have other personnel who might not ordinarily be at public health and public, public safety, but have been substantially dedicated to the COVID-19 response. And in addition, we've had direct expenses as part of our operational costs. Covering those categories, we saw a couple of minutes ago. An example of medical expenses, we've been spending on the testing sites that you hear updated from those COVID-19 updates. Isolation and quarantine, that's sheltering that we have hosted. Cleaning costs, communication and outreach has been part of the public health expenses. We've had expenses related to that compliance with public health measures, so lots of PPE, that protective equipment like we're all wearing and like many of our frontline staff need in order to be able to safely do their jobs. Reconfiguring some of our public facilities so that we can safely deliver services within the context of the pandemic and social distancing. Telecommuting, lots of adjustments in order to have people to work remotely when they are not needed face-to-face on-site. And economic support, which we're going to talk more about in a second. And then various other expenses like food delivery, that was something that was incurred early in the pandemic response back in, I think, March, maybe April, in collaboration with the school districts. So what is next? We're calling out a few priorities here. There's no action that is needed to be taken by the Board of Commissioners because these funds are fully allocated and already defined in terms of what is allowable. But we wanted to make sure that we're in communication about what these priorities are. So obviously, the things that you saw before will continue, continued investment in testing and outreach and protection. In addition, we are prioritizing the eviction, eviction prevention and utility assistance. A few figures for you here. We have, so about 45% of Buncombe County's allocation is left, which is what gives us the ability to make some infusions of funds within these priorities within, before December 30th, which is our deadline to use up these funds. Earlier in the response, we invested $200,000 in housing and utilities through Health and Human Services. That was separate from one Buncombe. That was Buncombe County General Assistance Funds, and we were able to reimburse that through CRF. We talked a few weeks back about earmarking another $400,000 for that. Health and Human Services has been often running on delivering that assistance so far. When we put this presentation together late last week, that figure was at $160,000 so far, just in the first couple of weeks of administering that assistance. So it's possible that we will utilize that $400,000 and be able to infuse additional funds into it, provided that it stays within that timeframe of expending by December 30th. That $160,000 has served 132 households. I was thinking I had a percentage. Yep, it's 82% on housing and 18% on utilities in that latest infusion. So we also talked about childcare assistance, adding some funds to extend the traditional childcare subsidy program to be able to serve more families, so up to 300% of the federal poverty level for families of children ages zero to 12, which is important because some of those school-age families are need, families with school-age children are needing to access assistance. And so far, we have enrolled 44 families with 53 children in that CRF. families with 53 children in that CRF-funded childcare assistance. A silver lining of that, as we have been promoting the availability of this special COVID-19 assistance, we've had people who hadn't applied yet for the general childcare subsidy, which is always there, who had an opportunity to apply and enroll and be eligible for that assistance as well. And the third category called out on the screen here for you is internet access or virtual learning support. As we listen to the community, one of the top needs that we are hearing is internet access or broadband. And so, we have partnered with our school systems to try to identify ways that we could potentially use some of these funds to meet some of those needs. So, working with the two different school districts, with the city schools and with the county schools. And you see here listed as well, even looking at if there's a potential way to do, extend a partnership down to that pre-K level. Because, believe it or not, we have preschoolers, pre-K children, who are doing home-based learning. It's not all virtual in the same way that a K-12 student is using their computer, but nonetheless, it is, we do have home-based pre-K going on. So, those are three upcoming priorities. We wanted to make sure Commissioners hear that have some CRF funds going into them. And my last slide here is a summary, which is just some helpful context. This $9.6 million in CRF is secured in addition to all these other funding sources that are listed here. So, as we've compiled this information, working with your finance office and your budget office and your various other departments that have been able to access specific COVID-19 funding for, to support county efforts, it totals nearly $15 million across these different categories. These are all various different kinds of funding sources. The timeframes are a little different. This is not all one fiscal year. Some of these are multi-year. The structures for some of these funds are different. But we did want you to see that we're working diligently across the county to try to leverage and fully maximize any funding source that we could draw down for COVID-19. So, some examples of of what makes up these figures that you're seeing. Elections has funding from the Help Americans Vote Act. Health and Hum, sorry, emergency services, one of the items included there is Dogwood Health Trust grant. Centers for Disease Control funding is reflected in the Health and Human Services figures. Institute of Museum and Library Sciences is reflected in the libraries figure. Planning, there's a large sum there for transportation that came through the Federal Transportation Administration. And Sheriff has a grant included there that came through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. So, a mix of intergovernmental and private funding leveraged across these departments for county-wide response. And this is to, this does not yet include a couple of things that are pending. We've talked at length about CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus. We're submitting that application for $900,000 and also pursuing what reimbursement we can from FEMA in addition to these figures.
And these are all funds that are specifically for COVID-related efforts?
Yes, that's correct.
And planning is focused on transportation planning?
I can't answer the specifics of that federal transportation grant, but I know that the the figures that are listed under planning are transportation-related.
I'd be interested in hearing some more details on that. It's a lot of money. So, just out of curiosity, if you could get some more details on that, that'd be great.
Yep.
So, a question. You may have this in a future slide. I'm sure you're going to show it to us later, but there was, there was a mention of 53 families or X number of people, you know. At some point in time, I'd like to see, you know, how many families have been, you know, how, who have we helped? Or have these funds went specifically, you know, to communities? Or, you know, how have we impacted the community?
Sure.
It's a good review of, you know, the the dollars that have come in and that were going to be used. And I'm sure you're doing that in an equitable way. But it it would be good for us to see that and for the public to see how this money is actually impacting, you know, those, you know, some of the numbers.
Yeah. So, demographics of people that received economic assistance?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Thank you.
How long do we have to spend this money? And if we don't spend it all, what happens then?
As it's currently structured, we have until December 30th. We are listening to our partners at the state level, the Pandemic Recovery Office that I mentioned earlier, the Association of County Commissioners has been immensely helpful in navigating and interpreting the guidance. But ultimately, these are federal funds through the Cares Act, and that's the expiration date. Things could change. There are people who introduce legislation to adjust that, to add more time and/or more money. But December 30th is our cutoff now. And if we don't use it, we return it.
So, are you looking at a plan to fully spend what has been allocated?
Yes, we have a plan to fully spend it. We will, based on those existing priorities, plus those ones that said upcoming.
Right.
And being able to draw down reimbursement for personnel, we believe that we can fully utilize it by December 30th.
Good.
Thank you.
Do we think the subrecipients are going to use theirs by December 30th?
We hope so. We're in communication with each with each subrecipient. They had drawn down about 44% of their total allocations as of the end of September. So, we're in communication with each one about their initial plans, if anything has changed, if there are adjustments that we can make. We do not wish to send any of this back.
Is there a plan if if they say, hey, we're not going to be able to spend it, that it can come back to the county?
There's, there's not a plan at this time for that, but I think that that's probably a really important conversation for us to have.
Oh, yeah. Since we're going into November, we got two...
We won't waste it because we have a deadline.
All right.
Thank you.
Rachel, thank you for the updates.
Commissioner, they asked if you could move up the elections. Corinne is here, and she wants to get back out.
Sure.
Okay.
No problem. Let's go ahead and have the elections update.
Thank you.
Can you all hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for requesting this update. I'm going to go over each of our voting methods and relay what voters need to know, and then review some numbers with you according to each method. So, let's start with absentee by mail. Over 51,000 requests have been submitted this far to election services in just Buncombe County. And to compare that to 2016, the last comparable election, we had 7,500 requests. So, this was a very, very big push. For voters for absentee by mail, you can still request an absentee ballot. The deadline is technically October 27th. However, we really, really, really encourage people to get that done now so that, get that done now to make sure that you get your ballot on time and are able to return it on time. Make sure that you're filling out the envelope completely. So, get your witness signature. They need to print their name and give their full address. And you need to sign the absentee ballot as well. If you are returning your ballot in person, you can do that at our office. We have a very good operation going down there, and most ballots are being returned that way. You can return your ballot by mail, and you can also return it at any early voting location. If you choose that method, you will have to wait in line with with the other voters. So, if you don't want to do that, make sure you stop by our office. Let's go over some numbers. I told you about the 51,000 requests and how that's about seven times what it was in 2016. At the beginning, we had about a two-week backlog getting those requests in to send out the ballots. And that was reduced to a three-day turnaround about a week ago. And now, we are a day-to-day. So, if we get a request in, you'll, we'll send out your ballot the next day. We're very happy about that. It took a lot to accomplish that. So, we increased our staffing to 10 full-time people, 35 part-time employees, 50 volunteers working overtime, night shift, and weekends to get this done. More than 22,500 absentee ballots have already been returned. Ballots are counted, they're pre-processed at board meetings before Election Day. So, these results that we are getting in now are going to be uploaded election night. I know there's been questions nationally about that, that states do different things. In North Carolina, those results are uploaded election night. So, everything that has been processed at board meetings prior to November 3rd will be on those results that we upload as quickly as possible after 7:30 on election night. We've been processing between five and 6,000 ballots per meeting. A meeting takes two to three days, and they are six hours each. It is a big endeavor.
Wow.
And how often do you meet?
How often do we meet? So, we we meet, we'll, we start on a Tuesday, and we assess, we see how many we can get done in that six-hour period. And then, we continue our meeting until we're done. Usually, that's three meetings a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then, we focus on processing and getting ready for the next Tuesday.
Okay. But yours, does that mean there's basically one meeting per week, but it takes several days to happen?
Yes, one meeting that is continued over several days.
Understood. Thanks.
Let's move on to early voting. Early voting is happening now. We have 16 locations in Buncombe County, and you can go to any of those locations that are convenient to you. We have a wait map that will help you decide which location to go to, and you can find that online. If you have not registered to vote yet, you can do that at early voting. It's called same-day registration, and you'll need to bring some proof of residence, a utility bill, or your driver's license with your updated address on it, if you'd like to take advantage of that. The hours during the week are 8:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. We're also open weekends from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's Saturday and Sunday. And the last Sunday Halloween, last Saturday, excuse me, Halloween, we're open a little bit earlier from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We have curbside voting also at early voting, which we have increased because we thought that it would be more popular, and it is. So, we have doubled the number of curbside that we have, and that is for people who are unable to go into the polling location. You can't drop off your absentee ballot that way. If you are want, needing assistance with absentee ballots, come to our office, and we have curbside available there. To help you move through the process at both in-person, early voting, or Election Day, it is a great idea to download your sample ballot. Go to buncom county.org/vote to find that information, or call our office at 828-250-4200. So, some numbers, I'm very excited about these early voting numbers. We have big numbers everywhere this year. The first day of early voting was a record. We had 11,000 vote early on that first day. In 2016, we had 7,977, so a significant increase. We were voting 1,000 people an hour, and we did the, that same amount the next day. Like I said, we have 16 locations. That's 12,500, one location for for 12,500 registered voters. And that's significant because the state's recommendation or requirement is one site for every 20,000. So, we have well over that number, which is helpful in the event that maybe we had to shut down a site because of of COVID. That would be no problem for us. We would still be able to handle the volume. To work this operation, including backup poll workers, we have 275 early voting workers that are working two shifts. And then, we have our support staff back at our office, a coordinator who has four Rovers, a call center for the poll workers to call in with issues of four people, and then four people just answering public calls. Then, we have a night shift for auditing, and that's five people that work till about midnight. The wait map has been very useful for advertising. A lot of people look at that. On the first day, we had 24,000 people look at that map. I do think that we underestimated the number of people that we need as support staff for early voting. It's, it's been a challenge to, at the beginning here with the volume, but we, we're handling it. Of course, COVID precautions are in place at all in-person voting, and that includes extra poll workers that are offering PPE when, when the voters enter the site. They are offered a mask, hand sanitizer, and a single-use pen. And today, we finally got our iVoted pens. So, on Election Day, people will get iVoted pens. And then, of course, the poll workers are also in full PPE, the masks, gloves, they have cleaning equipment, and a Plexiglas shield between them and the voter. And then, all of the voting booths are cleaned between each voter. In the five-and-a-half days that we have been voting early, we have had 44,000 people vote early.
Using the early voting sites?
That's correct. Yes. That's in addition to absentee. Moving on to Election Day. Election Day is November 3rd. We are open, the polls are open from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. We have 80 polling locations across the county. And on Election Day, you're assigned a polling location. So, you need to look that up and go to the polling location that you're assigned to. Again, looking up your sample ballot will help you move through the process more quickly. There's no same-day registration on Election Day. So, if you're not registered, you need to make sure that you're going to early voting, and don't wait till Election Day. All 80 locations we're very happy to report are fully staffed. We have always struggled finding poll workers, and when the pandemic started, we were very worried about the fact that we had to have more-than-ever number of poll workers, and that our poll workers were in the higher-risk category. And so, we knew we were going to lose a lot. But the outpouring of support from the community and the county has got us fully staffed. That's 650 poll workers, that's including our 25 backups. We also have all-hands-on-deck support that day from 5:30 a.m. till about 11:00 p.m., when we get all the supplies back. We have two supply coordinators that have 10 Rovers, and everybody else is on calls. That's a very, very busy call day. And throughout the day, we're also having our required statutory board meetings. We will also have been working extensively with EMS, health facilities, PR, IT, law enforcement, fire, and AB tech to make sure that we are ready for any emergencies. It's been a fantastic collaboration, and Taylor Jones is going to talk more about that after me. If you combine absentee and early voting so far, that means that 66,000 people have voted so far.
Wow.
In Buncombe County, we have 205,000 registered voters. So, that's about a third of people have already voted this election. The second week of early voting, we tend to dip. We have a, it slows down a bit. And then, the second week, we peak again. I expect early voting to be the, the largest turnout. So, that leaves a lower number of people for Election Day, which, which will help keep things manageable. Like I said, the results are tabulated and uploaded as soon after 7:30 as possible. We have a big operation that puts that together. That will be the absentees that we have pre-processed, as well as the Election Day votes. I would also like to mention something that not everybody knows about, which is the 10-day canvas period following the election. So, Election Day doesn't mean it's over for us. We have 10 days afterwards where we are certifying the election. We'll count any absentees that we received by Election Day. We'll count any absentees that we received by Election Day, but were postmarked on Election Day, but received afterwards. And a new law allows that date to be the 12th. So anything that we were, was postmarked timely on Election Day, we receive between then and the 12th will be counted. I don't expect that to be a large number, but the absentee volume is bigger, and so it'll be bigger than in the past. We also process our provisional votes during that week. And in 2016, that was about a thousand of those. So smaller numbers, but it's, it's something that, that we do during that time. The last thing that I wanted to mention, and that Rachel mentioned as well, was just some recognition for all of the help that we have received from other entities. The State Board paid for all of our PPE, which is not insignificant. That is two hundred thousand masks, two hundred thousand pens, hundreds of gallons of hand sanitizer. It's, it is a lot, and it was significant coordination, all that we didn't have to do. So I wanted to mention that. We do have the HAVA funding, which is a little bit more flexible. It incorporates security too, so it's not just COVID money. And then the, we also received election-specific CARES funding and supplemental CARES funding, which is mostly for giving poll workers bonuses for working during the pandemic. Our office also reached out to the Center for Tech and Civic Life to acquire more grant money that way. We received a hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars through that method, and we're currently looking into another grant. And then the, one thing I also wanted to mention in the, this regard, I mean, it's obvious that this election was an expensive one. But absentee, the, this, this election raised awareness about absentee. And so I just want to mention that I think that's here to stay, that that part of our operation will, is going to be bigger from here on out. And that's all I have, are there any questions?
No, I would just like to comment. You know, I always vote early, you know, go. And this year, I got down to the, out of the polling place where I vote, and it's an early voting site, at ten after eight. And the line was just unreal, and nobody is more impatient than I am. But I want to say, commend you, because it was well organized, and I even, didn't even realize, until I was walking out and looked at my watch, that I stood in line for an hour, and didn't, you know, but the people were, the volunteers were excellent, and I heard nothing but good comments from the people, you know, who were there and coming through. But you all are doing an excellent job, keep it up, because I was, I was impressed. That was the smoothest I've seen, and the most people I've, you know, seen there at that time. But thank you for a job well done.
Thank you, our office is definitely working hard, I'm very proud of them.
Yeah, just chiming in to say thank you so much, and echo what Commissioner Whiteside says is, just the positive experience that voters are reporting is, is really such a testament to the really Herculean task that y'all are in the midst of. So thank you for the incredible work, and the integrity of that work, and the service to our community in that way.
Our pleasure.
All right, thank you so much, that's a great update. And thank you, thank you as well, to all the people who are working to make this important part of our democracy function so well in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, Taylor? Can't forget you, thank you for being here.
Well, thank y'all. So I just want to say that we've done kind of all-hands-on-deck, all-hazard approach to working with all the public safety officials to, to look at everything from power-out situations to severe weather situations, to demonstrations. So we've done some tabletop exercises, we've done some walkthroughs to make sure that everything's, will proceed well. And we have a group that, emergency preparedness folks, that's going to be working with Corinne during this process to ensure the safety and well-being. So this kind of all-hazard approach that we've taken kind of brought all of the agencies together in the county that provide public safety. And we looked at, did a tabletop exercise, basically looking at all-hazard approach of things that may be a impediment people to, to actually vote on Election Day. Everything to snow coming in, severe weather, you know, getting all that cleared out, being able to de-ice things and stuff. So, and all these exercises actually test all of our first responders, not just for this event, but for anything else that may happen, you know, like just severe weather day here at the county, and making sure that resources are. We looked at the backup power sources, and we actually pre-deployed equipment so that we can send out in case there's a loss of power, any interruption. We also looked at how we could work through the framework of good communications between everybody from IT, AB tech. We actually worked with them to actually do the tabletop exercise at their facility. And so Clint Gorman over there helped us develop that exercise so that all of our folks could actually participate in the exercise and not have knowledge of it. So it's really kind of a partnership of all the county and city all over Buncombe County, about how to make this safe. So all of our municipalities are all involved in this process. The county departments, everybody has come up the table. We practiced today with some of our public information officials and law enforcement, fire, to just kind of have a final walkthrough so that everybody was on the same page, and everybody is. So I think we'll have a safe event, and so far, everything's went as smooth as can be. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Taylor, that's what we want to hear, so that's, that's great, keep it a great work.
And one thing I'll add, Taylor, is we've been doing this at the staff level. We would love to have an all-hazard plan, where we have the commissioners to come in, along with city council, or any of the other municipalities, and let you go through an emergency and tabletop with us. So that's something you'll look to see in the new year, that as we plan, what does that look like as we prepare for our preparedness efforts here in Buncombe County?
You mean after the elections, not for the election context, but for other kinds of scenarios?
For anything that we go through, so how would we respond?
I will be.
All right. All right, next up, we're gonna get, we're gonna have a discussion about the Dogwood Trust Grant Jail and Prison Reentry Project.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Tiffany Hanacho with Justice Services. And so I'm breaking you some exciting news, that we were awarded a Dogwood Trust Grant for jail and prison reentry. And one of the things I'll just share with you is the purpose and the background of why this grant was important, what our recommendation for the, our deliverable for the service model, the actual grant award, and then what we're asking for the board to do. So some background, as you know, this spring, we were able to work with our justice partners and reduce our jail population by forty percent. And because of the way we're processing through this pandemic, we're starting to see some increase in our population. And so the purpose of this grant is not only to improve public health outcomes for our community and justice-involved individuals, but also sustain some of our jail population reduction. In addition to that, the way the new medical contract is set up, if we lower our jail population, we'll also see other county costs, such as the variable expenses in the inmate healthcare. And then a lot of our work also aligns with best practices to reduce overdose deaths and ER visits from those that are incarcerated with chronic medical and physical illness. So earlier this year, there were about two thousand alcohol withdrawal protocols that individuals were placed on, and about twenty-five hundred cows, which is the opiate withdrawal protocol. So these are not necessarily individuals, but it could have been the person coming back and being readmitted or rebooked in the jail, and also needing to go to another detox protocol as well. So on average, there are about sixty-five unique individuals that were released on a detox protocol, sixty-three on psychotropic medications that did not have adequate follow-up services. In addition to that, there are about twenty-four individuals during that time period that had a chronic heart disease, eleven with asthma, nine with seizure disorder, twelve for hepatitis, and five with diabetes. And so ensuring that these individuals also have adequate follow-up care in the community. So I do want to acknowledge that we do have some robust jail and diversionary programs. Within Justice Services Department, we have a contract with RHA that we've continued for at least ten years now, and they're doing a lot of the screening and assessing, and coming up with the plans for jail reentry. However, there is no one, when someone gets out or released, that can help them follow up with that plan. In addition, the detention facility has fully implemented the mat-in-the-jail program, and so they're getting inducted on mat. There's a social worker, and there's someone in the community that can help those individuals follow up to ensure that they get mat once they are released from jail. And, and within Health and Human Service, there's one peer support specialist that is working with those who have opioid use disorders that haven't been inducted in the jail, but they might still have the disorder, to get adequate follow-up care once they're released. However, there is no adequate follow-up care for those who have chronic medical conditions, mental health conditions, or non-opioid use substance disorder like alcohol, methamphetamine, or crack cocaine, for example. And so we want to make sure that we create a comprehensive jail reentry program. So essentially, what the model, what the partnership with Dogwood would serve to do is create two post-release teams. So we have one funder within two departments, and two county partners. On the Justice Services side, we will expand the jail reentry to include the contract with RHA, and they will have three additional, or add four, four additional contracted staff. So there'll be a program manager that supervises the team inside the jail, as well as the staff outside of the jail, to ensure continuity of service delivery. We want to make sure that the individual is, that are released are compliant with medications, and have adequate follow-up care if they're using IM injections for, say, psychosis, or they need help getting their psychotropic medications for bipolar depression, to make sure that the nurse can be there to support medication compliance and follow up also for their medical conditions. Case managers and peer support are also there to assist for people to get into housing, or sustain housing, and reduce any of those criminogenic needs. And then on the public health side, we would add additional service to the current community linkage care that would focus on the opioid use disorders and the chronic medical conditions. That population also serves prison. So rented to the grant is our detention facility and our surrounding correctional facilities, like the Women's Correctional Facility in Swanonore and Craggy. With that being said, they will award, they're going to award us four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Majority of the money would be contracted. The five thousand that will not be contracted is because our partners in this relationship are so invaluable that they're in, using our county equipment, so we would purchase that for them. And then RHA, who would hire for four positions, would get three hundred and sixty-two thousand. Sunrise for their additional position would be at seventy-two thousand dollars. With that being said too, the award is, will start November 15th, and go for a year, and there's no county obligation to continue that funding. But we want to make sure that we're assessing for outcomes, and we are looking at ways to sustain the program if our objectives are achievable. With that being said, on November 4th, we're asking the Commissioners to accept the Dogwood Grant and approve the budget amendment. Thank you, any questions?
I've got a question or comment.
Turn this on.
That's better. So I've been having some conversations recently about reentry into the workforce. So at some point, you know, I'd like to hear some information on how we're connecting those that are trying to re-enter the workforce, that have come out of jail, or come out of prison, or that are local, and they're running into obstacles. And in my opinion, those are obstacles that could be moved. Some are ID-related, some are just connected, you know, connectivity to the, the sources. And, you know, I'm of the opinion, it doesn't work for everybody, but if you can get someone a position where they can, you know, feel good about what they're doing every day, and engage them every day, that some of the other issues that might creep up, and such as, you know, drug issues and other things, that we might be able to avoid some of that. So I'd like to hear convert, some, some information going forward on how within your department, other departments, that we're maybe trying to do, do some of that.
Thank you for elevating that, that is definitely something that we see, I see as well, and working with staff and community partners to try to reduce some of those barriers. Some of the barriers, it's hard for us, because they're from other, we don't have control over, or we try to advocate for as best as we can, but making sure internally that we are reducing the processes, the barriers, and eliminating those, so that way people don't have to overcome the barriers and get them back to work as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and, and I don't know that we'll be able to do everything, but we may be able to connect, you know, maybe we can be the place where they can find connection, you know, here. And some of these conversations just happened during a season, and this one for me has happened in the last few months, and it's educated me some. So I look forward to some additional conversation about it, thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions? All right, thank you for the excellent update, and we look forward to considering this at the next commission meeting, two weeks from, two weeks from today. All right, and next up is the donation policy.
So Commissioners, before Mason come up, I do want to purpose this presentation by letting you know that we have formed a policy review team as a staff. We're planning on reviewing all of our internal policies to make sure they're updated and follow in best practices. The policy team is led by performance management and finance. So I want to take this time to introduce our newest Performance Management Director, Rafael Baptista. Rafael comes to us from the City of Raleigh Economic Development Office and Durham County Strategic Planning Department. He has five years of experience with performance management, and played a key role in both Raleigh and Durham strategic plans. His role with economic development in Raleigh focused on supporting small businesses and entrepreneurs with a focus on equity. He has an MPA from UNC School of Government, and a bachelor's degree from Willamette University. Rafael stated that he is looking forward to supporting the implementation of the Buncombe County Strategic Plan for 2025, and exploring opportunities to use strategy, performance data, and innovative thinking to help us here in Buncombe County best serve the community. So Rafael Baptista, anything you want to say?
No, I'm just really excited to be here and support you all in the goals that you set for this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for some time this afternoon. I do sit in the Finance Department, but as the county manager mentioned, I am here today in a role as a policy writer under the new collaborative effort for policy review in the county. I am here to introduce to you today the donations policy. It is a new policy at the county-wide level, and so we'll be asking for your, your approval for some things moving forward. Before we get into the details of the policy, I do want to acknowledge what was the original working group for this policy that offered some great guidance and broad perspective early on in discussion and development of the policy. I'll also say that there are administrative procedures that are being developed to support this policy, and there is cross-departmental input being gathered as a part of that process. So to kind of set the stage for why I'm actually in front of you today, the policy addresses the corporate authority of the board to accept gifts and donations on behalf of the county. And so the proposed policy will request- will request some delegation of that authority. So, the, to frame the policy, kind of our goals were to honor and operate within the statutory authority of the county to accept gifts and donations, but also to apply best practices in fiscal and asset management. So, the considerations you see here should reflect those goals, and those goals should also be reflected in the policy that's being proposed to you. The prime question, as we consider any donations, is, does the county have statutory authority and a public purpose with which the donation can serve the county? Moving from there, if we are successful kind of in answering the legal question, additional questions are, who's the appropriate authority to review the donation? So, we want to make sure that we're moving ahead with a timely and efficient acceptance of the donation, and putting it under the control of whoever's the most appropriate authority to manage it. We also want to consider, what are the appropriate settings in which to accept a donation? We want to do things in such a way that the county, but also our donors and all representatives are protected and safe in that process. So, the policy speaks to that. The policy will also speak to how we respond to donors. Sometimes, it is necessary and appropriate that we refuse donations, and there could be a range of reasons for that. Maybe there is an excessive administrative burden related to whatever that is, or it's simply outside the scope of authority for the county. And so, we want to be honest with ourselves about that in the process. What you'll see on the screen that is not reflected explicitly in the policy, is the question of tax deduction eligibility, and that's on purpose. The county can't advise on tax matters, but in our investigation, research, and development of this policy, we found that donation to the policy for a legitimate, to the county for a legitimate public purpose, does not necessarily preclude you from tax incentives. And so, we want potential donors to the county to know that donating directly to the county, as opposed to foundations or related committees, does not rule out other benefits that you might reap from that. So, stepping kind of deeper into the details of the policy, up top, we separate the management of grants from donations. Grants and donations are different primarily in the way of their budgetary and performance requirements. And so, I want you all to know that we're handling grants separately, and that doesn't affect any of the processes that you all would be accustomed to on that side. The core of the policy is really minimum standards and expectations for you all and staff. So, again, what's an appropriate setting for donations to be handled? How are they initiated? Regardless of initiation, again, we want to make sure that all parties involved are safe. As it relates to solicitation, this would require prior approval. Again, that safety question, but also to make sure that we are prepared to appropriately administer and support whatever that event might be. The next question is, who's appropriate, and how do we go about reviewing donations once they're offered? It's not automatic that we would accept a donation. We want to be conscientious in that review. So, there will be additional and special consideration for designated gifts and gifts of real property, to ensure that we're on the right plane when we accept those. If a donation satisfactorily passes the review process, again, it would go to the appropriate authority for acceptance. And so, we'll speak to some thresholds in a minute. And then, we're also committing ourselves to communication with all involved stakeholders. So, internally, we want to make sure that we're getting in front of you all, but also communicating consistently with whoever our donors are, and being transparent with the public. Finally, the policy speaks to management and tracking of donations. So, again, we want to put donations under the control of whoever the subject matter experts are, that manage those programs or projects for which a donation is being granted. And then, making sure that we align with the other standards and rules that we already have in place for the county. So, we want to acknowledge, we already have some existing policies or handed-down statutes, and so, we'll manage donations in line with those as well. So, I mentioned that we are also in the process of creating a procedures manual. These are kind of the key sections that will appear there, and this will give more specific guidance to staff in the way of administrative process. So, the grid of it all, once we get there. So, coming back around to the question for consideration for you all, these are kind of the proposed authority that we would put in the policy. This top section is really the authority that would be retained by you all. So, any consideration of real property, no matter how big, small the value, anything that is $500,000 or greater, and anything that a department or a program deemed appropriate to escalate for your review. So, for actual consideration, or maybe celebration, or transparency, or for whatever reason, we then would ask for your delegation of authority to the county manager and staff for consideration of donations below that $500,000 threshold. So, the word consideration is important, because these thresholds do not bypass any other administrative requirements. So, if a budget amendment was required, it would still come to you all for consideration, the same as capitalization of assets or any other legal requirements. The $500,000 mark was selected to align with the purchasing threshold in our procurement manual. So, it's kind of a similar line for authority in other spaces. And then, we would commit to making you aware of all donations, regardless of value, through whatever means necessary. If you didn't see it as a part of the consideration process, we would include those in the quarterly financial reports, and so, there would be public awareness either way. Are there any questions on this main piece, before I kind of move to what the next steps are?
I don't think so.
So, coming up, I've mentioned the procedures several times. We're going to continue to work those through. We are working to redesign and redevelop the county's donation page, so as to funnel more easily donations directly to the county, as opposed to some of kind of our partner foundations and committees. We would re-present this policy to you at the November 4th meeting. I would see it on the consent agenda, unless you all have significant concerns. And then, as all of these pieces are finalized and completely approved, we would begin to implement the new standards, moving into the new calendar year.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
I have one. How many donations do we get in a year? I mean, this is not a common occurrence.
Agreed. I don't have specific numbers, but I think that was a part of the concern, is that the administrative cost of filtering through outside organizations was too high from, as compared to the value received from the donations.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. Commissioners, the last item on our agenda for the briefing meeting is the right-of-way at Jacob Holmway item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, picture in your mind's eye the Inca Commerce Park and Inca Intermediate School. And we know, we've discussed many times, the bridge to nowhere and Jacob Holmway. Now, also remember, at some point in the not-too-distant past, this board approved the Hawk-on Economic Development Agreement industrial air conditioning units. There's been a lot of grading up on that site. There was a great big hill. Now, they've got 40-some acres of 12-foot-deep new dirt out there, down in that old field. What Hawk-on is running into, that's driving this to be a hurry, is that they're working with DOT to get all the rights of way. DOT has limited timeframes to put on their calendar and agendas for approval of roads into their secondary road system. And Hawk-on is, through their engineers and developers, also working with the underground utilities. So, the first step in all that is to get the DOT to approve Jacob Holmway, to approve it as being part of its secondary highway system. So, if you look, thinking of the, thank you, Max, if you're thinking of Inca Intermediate School, you will recall, in 2015, the county took title to 22.6 acres, which is where the Inca Intermediate School is built. That's to the east, to the right of that image on the screen. Ashville Commerce Parkway, mentioned there, is the main access road off, well, one of the two main entrances to the school, this one from the Jacob Holmway side. The county leases the entire acreage to Buncombe County Schools. Buncombe County Schools recently sublet 2 and 1/2 acres roughly to Inca Fire Department, and they're finishing up their construction of that fire department, hope to open it, I understand, within about six weeks. You'll see in the lower middle of the screen, 0.005 plus or minus acres, which is 233 square feet of that 2 and 1/2, 22 and 1/2 acres of property, which is what NCO DOT needs, recorded right-of-way, to allow them to accept the entirety of Jacob Holmway into their secondary highway system. So, we'd be asking this board to recognize that that surplus, and that it'd be in order to enter into that agreement with DOT. We have already discussed with Buncombe County School Board attorneys, that they would also join on that right-of-way agreement. And I'm working back and forth with the chief of Inca Fire, and with their architects, to make sure they understand exactly where this 233 square feet is. If we had a GIS map, and if I had time to put it up there on the screen for you, you'd see that that road is complete. Jacob Holmway is done down in that section, not beyond Hawk-on, and not over to the bridge, but right here, it's all complete. And that's a little piece of sidewalk that stops right there at the end of that C1, C3 tile. So, it's a completed, done deal, and they just need it to be official, so they can have title to it, to accept it into the road system.
Commissioners, any questions? All right. If, by consensus, at the beginning of the regular meeting, I'll ask to add this to the, under new business.
Thank you. Because if we don't, if we miss this threshold, it goes to January, and that's going to mess up Hawk-on.
I don't see a lot of downside to this. So, I think, so, thank you. Thank you.
Been going on a while.
It's an outrageous proposal. I can't believe you brought it up. Okay. Commissioners, thank you so much. Thank you to all the staff. We've covered all the items on our agenda, so we'll adjourn this meeting and reconvene at 5:00 for the regular meeting.